And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So first on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
I'm sorry, the minutes of January eighth, the January eighth, two thousand nineteen meeting.
So moved.
Okay, okay. Any discussion?
John.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So that's, how do we count that for absences? Four zero zero, just count who's here. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here for public participation? Nope, there isn't. So for our reports, our wonderful student representative, Rhea Kamani, is not here because she's busy studying for midterms and we wish all of the high school students good effort and good results on all their midterm exams. I hope it goes well. Are there any subcommittee reports? Nope. Okay. And we have a couple of announcements. Mr. Murphy, would you care to talk about Mr. Clancy's retirement?
I'd like to just take a minute to acknowledge that our building inspector, John Clancy, is going to be retiring. He announced that a short time ago, I think February eighth is his last date, so that's only a couple of weeks away. John's been the building inspector for at least thirty years. He's a great guy, hard worker. It's the busiest department in town by a nun. And had the opportunity to work with him quite extensively back when we built the new memorial school and renovated the middle school. And he was always very helpful to the school department during those projects. And anytime we had a question, he'd get us the answer. And he certainly was instrumental in moving those projects forward. And both of them came in under budget and under deadline, so he shares in the credit for having that done. But I just wanted to acknowledge, I don't think we're going to be meeting again before John's last day, so I just wanted to take a minute and thank him on behalf of the school department and the school committee, wish him the best of luck in his retirement. He's worked hard and he has earned his time off and I hope he enjoys his retirement and hopefully we'll still see him around town on occasion. So, thank you, John.
Yes, and Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I just want to join Tom in congratulating John Clancy for his thirty-plus years here in Burlington. As Tom said, he was always committed to helping the school department move their projects forward expeditiously. He had a lot of insight. He knew some shortcuts that he could recommend to make the project go quicker and smoother. And just a class person all around. And I just congratulate him and I wish him a healthy and a lengthy retirement. Thank you.
Well, they've said it all, but John's a great guy and I'll miss him. So enjoy your retirement, John. Okay. Are there any other comments?
Again, just for the two school building projects, he was just a wealth of information. And I don't think the projects would have gone as smoothly without him. So, thank you, John, and I'm jealous and enjoy your retirement.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Larkin?
It's not about Mr. Clancy.
Ah, another announcement. Excellent.
I just wanted to congratulate the boys' track team on their third straight division. Oh, I jumped the gun.
You jumped the gun, Patrick.
I saw Coach Kyle and the coaches downstairs today and I said, "They're like the Patriots. It's boring. Every year we can count on the Super Bowl and the boys winning the state relay championship."
We'll take it anyway.
So, Division Four state relay champs, third year in a row, I believe.
That's correct.
So congratulations to Coach Kyle.
Pretty much said what I was going to say. Of course, I'm a little bit partial to the track team because my son was on the track team for four years here at Burlington and he's been a coach now for seven, I think, seven or eight years, maybe longer. And it's been amazing because when my son was on the track team back in the oh-four to oh-seven timeframe, it was very, very difficult to even compete at state meets. And it still is very, very difficult. But Burlington, over the years, the program's grown. I think they have, in the wintertime, they have seventy, eighty, ninety kids that try out for the track team. Everybody makes the team and the only requirement is you have to go to practice and show up. And if you can't be there, you have to have a good reason. And over the weekend, there were actually some very good athletes that weren't able to compete in that particular meet. And despite that, they were able to win their third straight Division Four state championship. I think there were over forty teams in Division Four that they competed against. So to come in first place, and they came in first place rather handily this time around, it just, I said to Eric, I got a photograph of it and I sent it over to Eric over the weekend and I said, "Is this the beginning of a dynasty?" And he texted me back a short time later, said, "Let's call it one. Let's call it a dynasty." So it's nice, it's nice to see the boys do so well. I think the girls competed very well at that particular meet. And, you know, it's not just one area where they excelled. They excelled in the distance. They had some, Eric gave me some information here. They won the three-by-shot putter. The thing about the relays is it's not one person. It's the, they add up the scores of three. So you have to have a strong team in order to do well at the relays. That's why it's such a prestigious victory for the town of Burlington because it shows the town that you have a lot of depth. So the towns that have one or two superstars, they can't win a relay meet. But the towns that have a lot of participation do very well. So I'm not going to read all of these victories by the various individuals, it would take too long and you're always afraid you might miss someone. But I just want to congratulate the entire team. They did a great job. And I think we might have to get a bigger trophy case pretty soon because they keep bringing home these trophies. And congratulations, of course, to the coaches as well because they put in an awful lot of time. And that's my report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yes. Are there any other announcements from the committee? Does Ways and Means have any report right now? Okay, thank you. So we'll move on now to instruction and technology.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Patrick, you want to give a brief update on our, one of our least favorite topics?
Yes. So just again, a point of information, we had our first formal meeting to kind of discuss the upcoming MCAS testing with myself, building principals, some technology people. And we're in really good shape in regards to Burlington. The one big change for us this year is it's the first year they're going to have online testing at the high school level. The old paper-based legacy MCAS is gone and they're on to computer-based testing now, the next generation MCAS for grade ten. This will be the first year. So just so people know, and I know Principal Sullivan, well in advance of the dates, will remind people and we'll have announcements, but March twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh will be the grade-ten ELA next-generation MCAS. And in the math, there's a little bit of a delay and the math is in May, the end of May, May twenty-first and twenty-second. And for the elementary, we have a window that opens at the beginning of April and goes till the end, the beginning of May for ELA, we have a window. And then for math, the window goes to the end of May to get the math done. And I think the windows, the reason the window's so large is because a lot of schools aren't as fortunate as we to have the devices in students' hands to be able to lessen the disruption to the instructional time by getting this all done in a short period of time. So we're fortunate in that regard. So again, thanks to the community that we have those resources. So some of the schools that have a card or two will spend that whole window. It'll impact their instructional time at a school for over a month. So again, we're really fortunate to be able to do things the way we do them. And again, we're in very good shape thanks to the experience we've had going back to when we were pilot testing for the state. So we're confident. I know we worked out the, some of the snafus we felt from two years ago with the writing and the keyboard, so we're confident that that will continue this year. And I'll update you when we start the testing.
Just a brief comment. I think Patrick and everyone's done a great job with the logistics of the test. And I know they put in a tremendous amount of time, so thank you and thank everyone who's doing that. The state's struggling now with what the cut scores will be with the new test. And so they're trying to determine, what do they call it? The competency determination, the CD. What passing score is going to be for a high school diploma in Massachusetts? And they're still trying to figure that out. Because of the new test, they have to change the cut scores. And so I'm assuming they're going to look at the performance and they don't want graduation rates to sort of drop off a cliff. So it just, when it's new, it usually takes a few years for everyone to figure it out. And the three-to-eight testing is problematic enough, but the high stakes really aren't until high school. So I just think we're going to have to watch it pretty carefully. We have not had an issue getting kids over the bar for a high school diploma. Again, I don't think there's that high correlation to any other sort of future success with, but I just think we have to be a little bit more careful. We'll probably spend a little bit more time talking about the test itself to you all, not the logistics of the test, but just to make sure that the state, we believe, is moving in a fair direction. They're still going to require lab science, but they're talking about limiting the options in other way, eliminating, I think, the engineering and potentially the chemistry because not enough students are taking it for the state to support the tests. So it would just be physics and biology for science. We're asking for an expansion. And then I think I sent something out to you, which I'll make sure I do again, is the civics. They're going to require some sort of civics project that I think we can build into an existing social studies class. But I think, so the graduation requirements are changing, so we just want to make sure that we're keeping up with that.
Any other comments? Okay. Moving on to communication. Is that you, Dr. Conti, or Mr. Larkin?
What's the first thing?
The professional development day on March eleventh.
Yeah, March eleventh. I just want to let people know that we've planned a, what we're terming a district-wide school safety summit. And really, the thanks for the planning goes to the Burlington Police Department. They've been trying to coordinate this for well over a year at this point and we're glad we were able to find a date to do this. And basically, we'll have a couple of speakers. The first speaker will be Alyssa Parker. She's a Sandy Hook mother. She'll be coming to speak to staff and, from her experience. And then we'll have a break and we're going to review our own, some of our own protocols with the police. We did a little bit of that back in August, but we'll do a little bit more. And then following the middle day break, lunch, we'll have Frank DeAngelis, who was the principal at Columbine during the time of the shooting there. And again, just, it's something that none of us like to talk about, but it's something, obviously, in this day and age, we want to assure everyone that we do spend a lot of time considering the worst-case scenario of what could happen here if something, and our people are well-prepared. And again, we're thankful to the Burlington Police for being our partners in this work and helping us to set this day up.
So again, this day really resulted from, I think, your meeting with Chief Kent. I think we have another one scheduled, but this was last year's meeting that they were looking for more professional development time. So this was the result of that request. So I just wanted to make sure that we communicated that we're following through with your request. So that's happening on March eleventh. Again, thank you to Patrick for, and the Burlington Police for coordinating all the details. So that's great.
Okay, thank you. Any comments before we move on? Okay. So the kindergarten information night, how did that go?
Well, I'll give you two perspectives. I can give you, I thought it went well. I think, almost, we asked to raise our hand. So we say anyone who's new to Burlington or this is their first child, it's usually about ninety percent of the parents in the room, it's their first child. And the room is full, so it's amazing. We introduce them, again, to our great educators. I think the feedback that we get is really positive. I think this was our fifth year at this point. The Fox Hill students put together a great introductory video about a day in the life of a kindergartner and the kids explain it themselves. So it's, it's really, I think it's a great way to see sort of what the kindergarten experience is going to be. The star of the night's always Donna Sullivan for the before and after-school care, so parents are very interested about that. We also invite the Y coordinator there because two of our schools have Y programming as well for after-school. I'm trying to think. Lunch, we cover. Buses, we cover. And so, I don't know, I think it went well. But the second perspective, now you've attended as a parent, right? So how badly did we mess everything up? Was it, were we true to form?
Definitely true to form. I think what's scary for Eric and probably a little bit myself is now we're starting to see people my age and even younger show up. So the past few that I've attended, I didn't really know anybody in the crowd. Now I'm starting to see friends that I've graduated with and their kids are now in the same grades as my daughter as well. So I guess we're all getting older. But the night went well.
I'm flattered. I'm flattered you're thinking of me, Bob, in the same sense. I'm a generation ahead.
Sure.
So just to, obviously, to freak everyone out a little bit, this was the, we said it was a class of twenty thirty-two. How does that, how does that hit everybody?
Yeah. Not very good.
Twenty thirty-two.
So I was just going to let people know that, again, the presentation is on the website under District News. So if anybody couldn't get there, there, all the slides and resources. It should be in this.
Okay, yeah.
I don't want to show that one.
One of my kids was there. Excuse us, can we watch the video first?
Patrick, pause that for a second.
Yeah, sorry. Click right in.
No, that's okay. I just, one of my kids was there and her only complaint was they ran out of applications for the after-school program. Otherwise, it was all good.
You have to do the whole thing, just a few. It was funny.
This is a day in the life of kindergarten in Burlington Public Schools. Our bus drivers are so nice. When we get to school, we wind up at the door. We go to our houses and we're ready to work. Being in kindergarten is a lot of fun. We make a lot of friends. Ready, work, and daddy. Let's learn more about kindergarten.
So, anyway, the kids introduced it, which was great.
Excellent.
And again, our feedback has been positive about just starting with the general information night. There's just a lot of paperwork. There's a lot of student information, family information. And once we gather that and then as subsequent kids come through, we sort of can keep that connection to the families. But I think that first, that first experience in kindergarten is so important and our teachers and principals just do such a great job to build that partnership and to start that thirteen-year journey. So just a great, great year.
Okay. Any other comments? I just think it's great that we do that kind of opportunity, information night for parents, especially for parents who haven't been part of the school district, so that's great. The next item is the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education two thousand eighteen annual report.
We have a new commissioner, Commissioner Riley, Jeff Riley. And he's making some changes at the state level. And one of the changes that he's making is promoting public education in Massachusetts. And he's doing a lot of other work in terms of digitizing the, some of the work for the board. So he's doing a couple of things there. He has a website that's called Amazing Educators, I think, which is M-A, capital M-A. And he's promoting, I think, Teacher of the Year and some other great education that's happening. But for the Board of Education, which is B-E-S-E, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, their two hundred eighteen annual report, they asked for reports from the field and they selected different districts to present work that had been happening. And they made the request of Burlington. And our high school put together something on personalized learning. So on the Board of Ed website, Patrick, under what heading? It's on...
So if you go to the annual report, and this is, we also have, we did a story on our district website, that Burlington Public Schools was highlighted in the Mass Board of Elementary and Secondary Education's annual report. We were one of five schools that were highlighted. So if you scroll down on this report, they talk about five schools that are bringing the work to life. And again, Burlington High School is one of those, so I'll just show that for a minute or two.
This is a great one, actually. Okay.
My name is Robert Wong. I'm the help desk instructor at Burlington High. Our mission is to serve the Burlington High community. Over the course of my time here, my belief is that personalized learning has been the best way for us to engage our students and do innovative projects at the help desk.
I'm here with Eddie Reese, graduating senior from Burlington High School and the Burlington Help Desk.
As you manipulate the sand, it'll adjust to exactly what's going on. And if it gets to a certain level, it'll drop to actually water flow. So you can actually just press a button and it will continue to rain. So the area, and then as you let it, it'll, some water kind of fall down.
Right.
We benefit from strong leadership from our department leaders and administration. And because of our students' hard work, we've been fortunate to receive grants and present our work at MasQ in East.
My dream is to learn about computer science and artificial intelligence and eventually make some contributions to that field. This pilot was an amazing opportunity to learn more about these topics and use professional tools.
We're going to be allowing you guys to do a quick tutorial video on how to operate the magic throw.
instructional conference. It's hosted at Gillette Stadium in October. So we had a group of students presenting there with Mr. Wong. And then the one student who talked about ISTI, that's the national conference and that was in...
International.
International, and that was over Chicago. So one of our students presented at the international conference in Chicago. So, and again, this was, Burlington High School is one of, what, five schools, you said, that was included as part of the Board of Education, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education's two thousand eighteen annual report. And again, our focus was on personalized learning, but we could have focused on many different things, but that just was where the focus was. So congratulations to Shereen Terrell, was also a teacher, who was pictured, Leroy Wong and all of his students. So, thank you.
Any comments? Yes, Mr. Nelson?
I just think it's fantastic that we received that recognition. And, you know, sometimes we come to these meetings and we hear some negative news and this is about as positive news as you can expect to hear. So I want to congratulate the high school and the whole, I think the whole system here in Burlington for doing an outstanding job. That's a heck of a recognition and I hope people take the time to make note of it. Thank you.
Okay. It's awesome. All right. Yes, thank you to all the staff and congratulations to the teachers and students who are doing such a great job with that. So moving on to the fiscal nineteen finance update. Okay. Is that going to be available on the screen or? Did you folks get this? There's an extra here if you need it.
Thanks. Yeah, no, this is, yeah. I just don't want to trick you.
Okay. I hope this is too much.
Bob's grabbing the adapter.
Okay. Why don't, you want to start then?
Sure, sure. So, again, you have before you the financial update, the same format as the past three or four, four or five months now. Page one shows the revolving fund summary. Two through three is operating budget year-to-date, followed by the accommodated year-to-date, and then the projections for the both of those.
Could I just interject, Madam Chair? Just, the school committee had asked, and Bob got some more detailed information on the school lunch. You had asked some questions about the school lunch. And again, I wanted to provide a little bit more detail and then if we need to continue to do that, we can certainly try to do that. So I think last time, Mrs. Monaco, you might have asked sort of some contextual information. It's showing a negative balance of fifteen thousand dollars. Sort of what does that mean? Is that good? Is that bad? Sort of where are we? And so Bob sort of uncovered a little bit more to do with that. And so I was going to just turn it over to Bob for a sec here.
As you speak, if you could clarify what page you're on and which line items?
That's not in that report.
It's not in this report?
Nope.
So this is a separate, okay? In addition?
So I had met with Karen Damasa, the Director of Food Services, again, because some of these questions had come up. Typically, what we discuss when we're talking about any reports, especially revolving account reports, is that when you look at Munis, it's literally a snapshot in time, right? So you may see something, especially something as volatile as the food account, where we're constantly having money in, money out, money in, money out. So when last month we looked at the report, there was a negative balance. You look at the report this month, there's a negative balance. But I think in the past five days, there was like a thirty thousand dollar swing in that account. And I'm just giving you a rough estimate. So if you look back from last year, and again, you don't have this report, what happens is, is that last month we had three payrolls, so that's why it looks like there's a big deficit. Because again, three payrolls plus everything else that happens. Also in December is when we pay out the clothing allowance for cafeteria workers as well too. So that was an additional expense. If you look at the report from last year that I have in front of me, you'll see that December, we were carrying a ten thousand dollar positive balance. But then in January, we were minus thirty-two thousand. And again, because of the snapshot in time. So when Karen runs her reports, obviously she can look at them daily, but she runs her reports monthly. And Nicole is obviously running her reports all the time, but the report that you see, again, is on a particular day. So I think Nicole is obviously has more of a professional opinion today to tell you where we're at status-wise, to say that we're probably comfortable for this year. But I just want to reinforce the fact that we don't always carry a positive balance in the food account. And when we see a negative balance, yes, it's intimidating and scary, but if we look at the monthly transactions, we do know that account fluctuates a lot. So.
Thank you. Any other comments on that issue? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to take it one page at a time on our comments today, but I'm pleased to see the number.
But I just want to reinforce the fact that we don't always carry a positive balance in the food account, and when we see a negative balance, yes, it's intimidating and scary, but if we look at the monthly transactions, we do know that account fluctuates a lot.
Thank you. Any other comments on that issue? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to take it one page at a time on our comments today, but I'm pleased to see the number today. I mean, when we were here in December, we had a negative balance of $71,000, and as Bob explained, it's because of reimbursements, payrolls, et cetera. But it's always nice to see a number in the $15,000 range. It doesn't get the heart beating as fast as some of these other numbers. I really haven't had a chance to compare this one with the other one. I think I just saw it a little bit earlier this evening. Nicole, do you see anything here that you're concerned with, other than keeping an eye on the lunch account?
No, so as Bob mentioned, I run these reports and everything pretty frequently, much more frequently than you guys see them. So I look for things like, you know, trends in revenues and expenses, so that I can catch them before they become a problem, and have, you know, a discussion with Karen, or see what's going on to address it. So at this point, I don't see any issues.
Okay, thank you. Ciao, here.
Any other questions then on the revolving accounts on page one? Okay. Is that how, are you going to go through it kind of?
I mean, I can. So-
Maybe what you could do is go through it, and if we have questions, we can ask, but also you could note things that you think are a good sign, something to be concerned about, you know?
Sure.
And point out things that we might not see, partly because we just got it, and partly because we don't have your expertise.
So pages two and three have the operating budget year-to-date, so the budget, everything that's spent and encumbered, and the remaining budget. And the same on page four for accommodated accounts.
Mrs. Monaco, did you-
Nicole, I don't, I just looked at Steve's copy of last month's report, and I'm trying to compare it with this month's report, and on the fly, it's kind of hard to do it, but can you tell me, I remember last month, it changed considerably from the month before, and what the projected amount would be at the end of the year. Can you tell me what the projected amount was last month and what it is this month?
Yes. So last month it was-
What page would that be on?
That would be on page six for operating, page seven for accommodated.
Okay.
But this, I want it for the regular budget.
Yeah, so last month for operating, it was 203, 433. And this month, on page six, you'll see 149, 185.
So last month it changed by $100,000, this month it changed by $100,000. That does not bode well.
No, it wasn't, it's not 100.
It's more like 50. Now, I thought you said it was 243 down to-
That was last month.
200, oh, 203. All right. So it's 50,000 this time, and it was 100 last time. What do you think it's going to be next month?
I guess, we'll see what I make the changes in real time, so.
Are you nervous about this, or is it just me?
I mean, I'd prefer to have a little bit more, I'd be more comfortable with, I guess, a bigger delta there to work with.
Do we have a good, accurate running list of things, as I asked, that were not in the original budget?
Yes.
And are any of those things possibly things we might have to ask Ways and Means to help us with in the, if we run into trouble? Like, was there a boiler in there? Was there an, was there something in there that we paid for that?
Yes, so.
Well, no, the boiler was paid from building rental revolving.
Okay.
So, I mean-
Would you, I hate to ask, but on that list, could you like include it? Because it changes every month. Could you include it with this report, when you do the monthly report?
So that list that I'm keeping is like a list of unbudgeted expenses?
Yeah. But they come out of the budget.
But they're not necessarily, I guess, going to tie to the change here, because some of the things are, say, if we have an employee that goes out on a medical leave of absence, and then we're paying a substitute, you know, substitute.
No, I understand that, but it puts a little narrative around the picture of what are we spending money on that we didn't budget for? I like the list. I'd like to see the list.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other specific things that you wanted to point out, Ms. Kasha?
Nope.
Any other, well, you know what? I'm going to give everyone a couple of minutes, because we, just to look through and see if there are things that people want to ask about. Okay, Mr. Nelson?
A question for Dr. Conti.
Yes, sir.
Eric, when we were here last month looking at the numbers, as Mrs. Monaco pointed out through her questions, we looked like we only had about $203,000, and that's a small amount with a large-sized budget like this. And this month, it's gone down roughly $50,000. Is there one, is there one area where we've had to perhaps hire someone additional that's created that number? And do you see other things on the horizon that might drive that number even lower?
So for this month, the change between the prior month for operating, there's, I guess, a couple of large things. One that we had sort of been watching was the teacher attendance incentive. So that actually did drop down, I think about $20,000 for this month. And then we also had-
When you say drop down, does that mean debt reduced? To our benefit or to?
Benefit, yes. So we had, I guess, mentioned in prior meetings, that when the teachers get paid the number of sick days up to five if they don't take any. So as time goes on, we reduce each month that liability based on the teachers that are enrolled in that, and how many days they took. But to answer, I guess, your original question, we had, it was mostly, it was all actually salaries. There was additional sections for a science at the high school that's being covered. So that's the majority of that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, could I ask a clarifying question? That's the difference in the $50,000 difference in that number?
The majority of it, yes.
The majority of it, okay.
Is that going to continue every month?
So that's for the full amount?
Oh, that's for the rest of the year?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Question? Yes?
So, again, not having, I know Martha thinks that we might just sit and look at it for a minute and figure it out, but I don't know about that. What is the projected surplus for the accommodated account? I know I'm looking at it, but will you just tell me?
That's on page seven, that last line there.
Yeah, is it $37,000?
No, the final line.
What page are we on now?
The 138, the 158, I'm sorry. On page seven.
Seven. On page seven. Yeah, I don't see it. What am I missing? Oh, it's $158,000.
No.
No.
$158,000.
$158,000? In the accommodated account we're projecting for surplus? Holy smoke.
It was $3,673 last month.
How can it be so tight?
Changes in services?
Yeah.
Diane, what would you say to this? Something about the budget?
If I could ask, if we go back to page two, if you look at our total school personnel budget, final number, I was comparing it to last month, and if I can find my page two from last month, and it looks like our remaining budget is a difference of about $3,000. Is that from, we went from 27.7 in the remaining budget there on that line to 24.5. So where does that generally, I mean, is that just, what kind of changes? Because if you're encumbering for the year, do we?
So on page two, this is the year-to-date, not the projection. So this is the difference between last year's and, I mean, last month's and this month's on that line, that 24,000, is the difference in what payrolls were, what salaries were paid out through payroll between last month and this month.
So that remaining budget is just year-to-date? I'm really confused.
Yep, so, again, we have operating budget year-to-date, accommodated year-to-date, and then we have operating projected-
Right.
And accommodated projected. So this is just showing you what's been actually spent. We don't currently encumber salaries. So the projection is, includes what would be the encumbered salaries.
Okay. Maybe. And so if we go to page six, which is the total, the operating budget for operations and, no, it's not for operations and maintenance. Is it the not, what is that total FY '19 requested budget line at the end of page six?
The 149, 185?
Yes.
Current anticipated surplus for operating budget.
So that's for the whole oper, that's what we were talking about earlier. Okay. And then where's the one that's the year-to, the full year? What page is that on?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Can you help me? Thank you. Page five, okay. Yeah. Thank you. So the total personnel budget on page five line, that is anticipated surplus, is down $25,000, and is that most of that, sort of having to add those science sections? Okay. Thank you. And that's half of the total amount that we were looking at on page seven, right? No, on page six. That total difference from last month. Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Monaco?
Dr. Conti.
Yes.
On the accommodated account, without breaking any confidentiality laws, is this, is this a lot tighter than you thought it would be? Were there a lot of changes in services? Did we have new kids come into town?
I think there were changes in services, and I think some changes in placements. And we had to add some staff, so we included you on that conversation as well, just for staffing reasons. So I think we added three IAs.
Two.
Two IAs.
The pine glen.
Yep, and so.
Is there any chance that, that some of the things budgeted and projected won't be spent?
Yes, it's possible, but I also think that Mary is evaluating and working with families all the time. You know really well, and so we're trying to-
I think we're watching those costs, you know, carefully.
Have we frozen the budget? Not accommodated. Have we frozen the budget?
Yeah, we're watching it very carefully. They haven't sort of, we haven't said, again, no to everything, but we've, we're watching everything very carefully. And again, the $149,000 is not, again, like Nicole, I'm not completely comfortable with that amount. I want to get through one year sort of under my belt first. It'd be easier if we had more, but we're watching it pretty carefully. Some of the expenditures we've had to make, we felt like we had to make, so you are aware of that, and we're, and the accommodated account, Mrs. Monaco, is, again, something we watch. I think it was budgeted very carefully and very closely, and I think we're always going to be very close on the accommodated account, I think.
Yes, Mr. Murphy?
Just to follow up on the accommodated account, I think we have to remember that the whole purpose of the accommodated account was to deal with items of our budget that tend to be more volatile and, to a large degree, out of our control. And to avoid putting freezes on operating accounts when something comes in on a accommodated account subject, we put this arrangement into place. So the fact that it is tight is probably not necessarily surprising. And if it does go over what we have budgeted, that was part of the understanding when we created the accommodated account. If something is dropped on our table that we have to deal with, and that causes us to have to spend more money in a particular area of the accommodated budget, that's when we go to either town meeting, or to Ways and Means, or to both, to try to deal with that type of a situation. So personally, I'm not all that concerned when I see the accommodated accounts running tight, because that's just the nature of the beast with that. I'm more attentive to, I guess, the operating budget, because those are typically items over which we do have control. And so I, to me, that's more, and I don't want to say it's concerning where it is now, but obviously, we'd like as much of a cushion in there as we can get. But the accommodated account, that's just the nature of the beast with the accommodated account. I mean, that's, we'll deal with it, but if we have to provide services to somebody who needs services, we have to do that. And if it goes over what we have budgeted, then we have procedures in place to deal with that, so.
Are there other questions among these folks? No. Does Ways and Means have a question? Could we get the microphone back up on the table, please, before you speak? Thank you.
I am concerned with the accommodated, because we had increased the percentage, I believe it was 15%. So what I'd like to see, if possible, is some more detail, obviously not breaking confidentiality, but if you had an abundance of services that was changed, or new people that needed services, I think we really need to see some numbers versus what was planned, because a 15% increase was hard for us to bite this time. And I think going into the budget season, it's going to be harder if we can't show that the numbers have substantially increased at this point. So how many kids are on services now versus when the budget was set? And a sort of generic breakdown of what increased services cost at this point. I mean, we all agreed on the two IAs, but this is concerning to be this low, I think.
So, Ms. Creed, we can try to put together as much information as we can, and again, you know this well, I'm sort of explaining it to the ether in general. It may not even be the number of students enrolled, they could actually drop. It would be the severity of the- It would be the severity of the, of the services that are provided. So we'll try to provide a picture of both. That, again, that, that kind of makes sense.
And I think it's really important now because we're looking at this for the upcoming budget. So if these kids are already receiving extensive services, then we can probably assume they'll be receiving them the following year. So we want to make sure that accommodated, if it is needed to be increased, is substantially increased to cover this.
And again, and Mary Hood, our new specialized director, has been working really closely with Nicole. I think you guys are sort of looking at it as, as many ways as possible.
Yes, so every time that, this current year, there's a change in services, we do revisit the, the budget for '20 to make sure that, that, that's also included going forward. So we're making those, those two adjustments simultaneously.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from, yes?
So. Oh, yes. So that, the 28 to 66? That was, yeah. So what was budgeted versus what's, what was spent? And that was for the, yeah, textbooks for, Patrick might be able to, I guess, elaborate on what those were for.
Yeah, there was a grievance settlement about textbooks for ELL students.
Okay. Any more questions from you folks? And any questions, yes? Ms. Sickler, if you'd come up?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ms. Sickler, town meeting member, precinct four. Let's see. I was wondering, Nicole, can we have totals? I'm looking at page one. Can we have totals in the bottom of these columns? I mean, it's just a better overview when you can quickly look at it instead of.
The totals in the, the rightmost column for each account?
In each column. The totals.
Why?
Four totals.
Why?
What? I'm sorry.
It's revolving accounts, they don't, it doesn't.
But, but at a snapshot, for each month, you can come in and look at it and quickly assess. Oh, last month, this receipt column totaled $1 million. This month, it totaled $8 million. So it, it's just a quick look at, gee, there's a, a change of $7 million. And then you can start to look at the details. It's an Excel schedule, right?
Yes, yes, that's created in Excel.
Well, hopefully you can do that. Page two. The, and I may have missed it, I'm, I'm sorry if I did. I'm looking at line 34. The sick vacation leave, budgeted at 120, and it's now, it says that we have remaining 15,000.
Sorry, which page?
Mm-hmm, page two. Line 34. So we have 15 and we're, what, four months through or five months through? I guess my question is, is that too low? Seeing that we're only partially through the year?
These are for maintenance and custodial. So I think that a majority of their time is taken during the summer. And so it's sort of a, like a timing thing too. So at this point, I'm, I'm not concerned.
Okay. Page three, we have two negative balances. More than, oh, the ELL. That's the one that was this, the grievance on the textbooks or something?
Yes.
Okay. And then the transportation.
We added an additional late bus.
Okay, so you don't expect that to be going in deficit any more than the 3,000 that it is?
We added one late bus and that was, that was the cost.
Okay, all right, so that shouldn't change. Super. Dr. Conti, are you going to be speaking at town meeting next week? With, with an update of, I mean, I'm, when I saw that Bessie thing, I mean, that was, that's a great thing to show town meeting, I think, as well. But to give town meeting an update on what all you have done in the last few months in terms of reports and, yeah.
I think we were going to do a brief budget calendar and, and an update. So that's what I was, haven't gotten my follow-up call. I have to talk to the moderator, but that was the plan. That's usually what I do in January, so.
Okay, an update, okay, good. And then we're back to Mr. Powers and the revolving accounts and that work. Do you know when that's going to be done?
I spoke with Powers and Sullivan last week and got some additional information out to them. And they are scheduled to come out starting Friday.
Okay, and that means they're, they're going to be finished mid-February? I mean, do you have a, a timeline on it?
I, I don't put, I guess, timelines on the Powers and Sullivan's completion of work. So I can tell you when, when they're starting and when they'll be here, but.
Okay, so it's open-ended.
Is going to be furnished. That's out of my control.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? Okay. Any other comments on the, this financial update? Nope? Okay. So we'll move on now to old business. We have the second reading of the 2019, 20 Burlington High School Program of Studies. So.
I make a motion that we recommend, that the school committee approve the 2019, 2020 Program of Studies for Burlington High School
Second.
as presented.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the, on the updates and changes and proposed booklet? Mr. Murphy?
Just briefly, I, you know, going through it. We had the first reading at our last meeting and there was some, some requests for some tweaks. And they seem to have addressed all of the, from what I can recollect, I recollect, they addressed all of the items that we had brought up. So I'm satisfied with it as I've prepared it tonight.
Just a point of clarification, Adam Sheehan. Tom, does your motion, when you say as presented, are you referring to as presented and updated in today's?
Yes.
Package? Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
I want, I wanted to also just comment, one of the issues that we did mention, they discussed with us last week and I looked into it a little more, is our, what I call the computer science scope and sequence, but it's called the software and development, something, I forget the total name. But it actually includes art elective courses. So I, I was glad to see that. This STEM course that's becoming STEAM and that's, you know, the STEAM is when you add art to STEM. And that for it to broaden the ways of learning and the ways of looking at information and knowledge and learning. And there are art courses in that scope and sequence that are available for students to take as well. So I was very pleased to see that. So no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So four, zero, zero. And now we can move on to new business. So we are, have been, do you want to present this, Ms. Dr. Conti?
Sure. I'll do my best. And so Sharon, help me correct this. So back in the fall, we asked the school committee to adopt a financial policy DBJ. But we did so as a placeholder while we were working on language that was suggested to us by Mr. Ayler of the subcommittee. So instead of not having any policy during that time, we adopted the MASCE, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Recommended Policy. So I think what we are doing now is we're discussing a policy DBJ that incorporates that a lot of what's in the Mass Association of School Committee policy plus language that Mr. Ayler discussed at that meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. So again, wanted to review this as a first reading, but the ultimate goal will be to replace the existing policy with this policy language, which has been amended. So that's the, that's the story of the DBJ. And again, this policy language results from some of the, sort of the concepts that were in the Mass Association of School Committee's policy with some of the language and suggestions that we had discussed specifically at, at a meeting with the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Okay. Mrs. Monaco?
Yes, so we had, we had a meeting. We had a meeting with Eric, Nicole, and Mr. Ayler, and I attended it as well to try and get this policy under control because it had been sort of waning and, and we really needed to get it done. And this is what we came up with at that time. Since then, Mr. Ayler has sent an email requesting a few more minor changes that I think Nicole and Eric need to incorporate before the second reading. At least to the extent that it makes sense. There was one piece of it that didn't make sense to me, but I'm going to leave that up to you two to figure out. And maybe you could send it out ahead of time with the changes from this first reading so that we can see it before the second reading. Then they're minor changes, but like one of them, Nicole, what was it? Something that I was confused by?
Something between accommodated and operating. I have, I have read the email.
That's right. Because, okay, so one of the things is, there is a bit of a misconception that the school committee is able to transfer money into or out of the accommodated account. And whether or not we legally can do that, I'm not absolutely positive, but it's something we never do. It's, it's anathema. It's not the spirit of the agreement. And I just want to make that clear. I don't want to write a policy that implies that we're moving money into or out of accommodated because that's just a no-no. We don't do it, won't do it. And I want to make it clear in the policy. So that was the thing I objected to. Then there were a few other very minor details that John had suggested, but they have not yet been put into this. So it needs a few updates for the second reading. And Nicole and Eric, you both have that email, right?
Yes.
Yes, his, um, his comments came after your, your meeting packets went out, so.
Okay.
What included there?
Other comments or questions? I also had some small questions about it. And some I can just let you, are edits. The way it's worded, it sounded like there's a separate appropriation instead of it being separate from the operating budget. So I can, I can put those.
Send them to Nicole.
You know, little things. But I have a, a couple of questions. And so on the first page, under revolving funds, it, the, I don't really know what this sentence means that these, that the revolving funds, and earmarks them for expenditure by the school committee without appropriation for particular purposes. Is that a legal term or an accounting term that I don't understand? I'm not sure what it's saying. It's number four on the first page?
It's a definition.
Yeah, so it's basically saying that these accounts are established for certain purposes to run. If it's a specific program, that the revenues that go into that account are associated with that program. And the expenses are paid out with the same purpose.
And, and what does without appropriation mean? Without additional appropriation from town meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Can we say that? Because we are appro, I mean.
They're, they're not appropriated, they.
By anyone, by the school committee or by the town meeting? Is that what that means? That there's no additional, it's just being expended? It's being specifically spent on specific things that that revolving account means?
So there's obviously different national laws that govern this, a variety of our revolving accounts.
Right.
And those accounts fall under school committee's jurisdiction. So that's.
Okay, so that's without.
So the money isn't appropriated. It comes in.
Right.
In other ways.
It's not textual.
So we don't need to specify that that's without town meeting appropriation? To make it clear? It's clear if you know the legal lang, the lingo? Okay. Accountants and financial people know what that means. Okay. Thank you.
Sort of a definition.
All right, I, I'm going to trust my financial experts here. Okay, good. Then. In our previous placeholder policy, we had said that transfers in excess of $25,000 would need approval from the school committee. And this says, and this again, just transfers within the operating budget. And this would only be transferred between salary and non-salary counts. So on the second page, where it says transfer approval requirements, on the second line there, this says of any amount, require a formal vote of the school committee. And that feels pretty restrictive, but I want to raise the question of the advantages of doing that or maybe having some number maybe smaller than 25,000. Maybe the number would be 5,000 or something. But what's the reason to say of any amount, requiring a formal vote of the school committee?
Just because the intent of the budget's changing. And I think, Ms. Monaco, and it's fine with me that it's part of the monthly reporting anyway. We're going to make those adjustments. You're going to see it. And.
Okay.
Again, I.
We tried to vote it, Martha.
It should, it should have a purpose for doing it. And again, I'm assuming I can convince you of that purpose and we would move forward.
Okay.
We felt more comfortable because we, we vote a bottom-line salary and a bottom-line non-salary. And they really shouldn't be mixed or transferred one to the other without justification. And so we didn't think that we should limit it, you know, and, okay, you can do it up to so many dollars. It's like, if you're going to move money from salary to non-salary or vice versa, tell us and let us weigh in on it.
Okay.
So it, it is restrictive, but it was deliberate.
Yep. Okay. Comfortable?
So yes, just, I guess, to reiterate what Mrs. Monaco said. The, where you guys vote salaries and expenses, if the following fiscal year, say, when we're doing the next budget, and you look back and see that those numbers have changed, those numbers will all tie into votes that have been taken by the committee.
Okay, good. I also, there's some wording in the, the current one that we voted on in September that I, I liked. And in particular, maybe I missed it, but there was, the school committee would act on the request at the next scheduled meeting. And if there's a delay, there's a process for taking care of that. Is that in this new policy? Especial, especially if there's, you know, a, a need for a vote on everything. We had a backup procedure. If a delay responding to the request would have a significant impact, negative impact on the system or cause non-compliance with other financial rules and regulations, then the chair would tentatively approve transfers at the request of the superintendent subject to the confirmation by the school committee. So is that in this new one? And I missed it, or is there a reason not to have that? I mean, sometimes we go home month or more between meetings.
So two questions. I don't believe it's in the new one.
Okay.
And is there a reason not to? Again, I, you could certainly add that paragraph if you wanted. That, that, I can, as part of a second reading, I, that would be okay. I think it says for sort of extenuating circumstances and it all comes back to the committee anyway. And that's recommended language by the Mass Association of School Committees. It's not, I didn't create the language.
Right.
So I think that would be something if you want. So I think that would be something, if you want us to consider that paragraph, we can.
So unless I hear other opinions, I'd like to request that that get included in the second reading, that paragraph. It doesn't have to be number two, you can put it wherever you feel it's appropriate.
Could you include that, that language in the email?
Yes, certainly, yes. And then my last question is the, the last paragraph, which this is a policy called Budget Transfer Authority. Or no, it's called Budget Spending and Transfer Authority. It's about spending. And I feel like the, it says it will follow state and federal laws, and that will follow our manual. And I'm not sure why we need to have that in this policy, but I guess if it's a, if we're calling it a budget spending and transfer authority, I mean, the spending authority is by statute? I don't know. Is that necessary to have that paragraph about spending in this particular policy?
I think it is.
Okay.
I just think it states the obvious, but...
I like the, so it ties into the second sentence.
It ties into which second sentence?
Purchasing procedures.
Yeah, purchasing, and then it ties into the manual?
Yeah, because the manual's separate.
Yep.
It's not actually a part of the policy.
Right.
It's like a procedure manual.
Okay, okay. Those are my questions. Thank you. I will send you my edits and the wording there. Thank you.
Thanks for doing it, Nicole. You did a great job with it.
No problem.
Yeah. Are there other comments on this first reading of the new budget spending and transfer authority policy DBJ?
No.
Okay. So...
Madam Chair, I just, I did want to mention to, again, you're always welcome to stay, but I haven't completed the work on the, on the draft budget for fiscal '20 yet, so we had to push that to the first meeting in February, which is going to be February 12th. So again, you're welcome to stay, but if you are going to stay for that agenda item, we're probably going to, we are going to push that with the, we don't have it for you, so we can't do that. And then Sharon, we wanted to schedule a potential additional school committee meeting for budget. And I think, was it the first March, March 5th? So would you all please check if you're available on March 5th, and that would be as needed? We're going to try to keep all of, much of the other agenda items off during the budget conversation this year, but again, I never know what's going to come up, so we just wanted to hold an extra date just in case. And then the budget calendar will be presented to, again, I'll mention it at town meeting, and it'll be, we'll have copies in the back of the room for people who want a copy of the budget meetings and the budget calendar.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is the 2019-20 Draft School Calendar First Reading.
So I believe you have two calendars and a reference sheet. One is the 187-day calendar for staff, the other is the 180 calendar, 180-day calendar for student. And then we have the religious days and federal holidays provided as well. A couple of the basic changes to the calendar this year, and I tried to, I think I notified everyone ahead of time, is the I think the biggest change, well, there's a big change in November that's possible. And then the other major change difference over the first 10 years is we have school on this draft scheduled for Good Friday. So we don't have Good Friday built in. And we don't have any of the other non-federal, non-federally recognized religious holidays built in either. So it's a, it's a religiously neutral calendar. I think part of the reason for doing that is it's important to at least have a starting draft that is, starts from that point. The second part is because of where Christmas falls, and I'm mentioning Christmas because it's also a federal holiday. With it falling on a Wednesday, that brings us back potentially on Thursday, Friday. And it might, I think it might be advantageous for us to just take the two full weeks off, keep the buildings closed for two full weeks. And then if we can capture another day on, on the Good Friday, that has the non-snow day calendar ending on June 19th. It doesn't push us into the next week. So again, I know that's a change. I know change is difficult. I know we may obviously get some reaction to it, but I think it might be a good year for us to try that. I think you're going to have teachers presenting to you on a distance learning proposal in the next month or so, which is going to talk about having education continue on days when school potentially has to be canceled. So it would allow for a, what used to, we called them what, just, I know we don't call them blizzard bags anymore, but that's sort of what people had been calling them, formerly known as blizzard bags. And that would allow the last day of school to be firmed up, again, if that's what we decide, the decision that we decided to go. So we typically do the calendars in a first and second reading as well. And, oh, the others change, I just wanted to, November is always a really challenging month. We have parent conferences and a professional development day that we split. And we do that because some parents have kids both at the secondary level and at the elementary level. And we were trying to capture as many five-day weeks as possible, and it's just really hard to do in November. So with, with Veterans Day on November 11th, if we have parent conference days on Tuesday and Wednesday, that would give families sort of a five-day weekend if they so chose. We would have a five-day week, first week in November, a two-day week, a five-day week, and then a three-day week for Thanksgiving. So again, November goes quickly, but we were trying to capture as many five-day weeks as possible. And again, we can move those days around as well, but then we would be shortening up either a week in October, or we would have a bunch of short weeks in November, which is what we've had before when we've had Major Election Day. And I think we have a reprieve in '19, and in '20 we'll have to make an adjustment for, for the federal election. March 3rd is a, that's a primary. But we're, we can have school, I think we talked to...
I think we're trying to have a PD do that.
We're trying to have a PD do that day as well, so, but we talked to Amy, and I think she said the school can stay open for the primary.
Yes, Mrs. Monaco.
Do we have some sort of a resource for parents to let us know how they feel about changes? You know, didn't there used to be an email address or a phone number or something where people could, because I think if we're going to make these changes, I think we need to listen to the public. And I don't think a lot of people watch these meetings, so they're not apt to pick it up right away. But I think that we should let people make comments. For instance, there may be people who, who want to have their say about the change with, relative to Good Friday. Not so much because it's a religious holiday, but because it's something everyone's used to. And I think it's egg-dying day or something. But I'm just interested to hear from people on that. The only thing that I personally object to is I do not think we should make those two weeks after, at Christmas vacation. I think we should start back to school on the Thursday and have school Thursday, Friday, because that's two days that, two days earlier, we can get out in June. And I think, now, I haven't seen the new proposal yet on, on snow days, or whether we would do it after three days, or after, you know, however many. But I do think there are going to be some issues there because of special education. And that's going to be a very complex thing to handle because of special education. So my two cents is that I would like to hear from people, but I would also prefer that we go back to school on January 2nd and not the following week.
Through the chair, Mrs. Monaco, I think one of the lessons I learned from the start time conversation we had is people didn't respond to it until it was real.
Right.
So we wanted to have the conversation tonight.
Yes.
We wanted to make it real. And then I think if we get out the information to students through their building, through their principals, I do think parents pay attention to that. And I think if we can give them a way to comment, I think that would be the, the way to go is through, is through their buildings. But I think, I just wanted the conversation tonight so we could make it, gives people a real calendar to respond to.
Okay, can we, can we devise a plan for how parents can be notified of these potential changes and ask if they have issues with it to let their building principals know?
Yeah, I think we should send something home from the buildings. I think that's what parents pay the most attention to, to be honest with you. So we can do sort of messaging from us, but I, I think they're just more tuned in to something that comes from their child's teacher or their building.
I just want to make sure that, that people have the opportunity, have the knowledge, and can respond.
Are there other suggest, comments or suggestions? Yes.
My only comment is, I don't really have a strong opposition to the Thursday and Friday day off after New Year's. I think that's the one you're concerned about.
Yeah, yeah. Just get out later in June, that's all.
It might be a good idea, as Chris suggested, to take a survey, maybe even more than just parents. Maybe we talk to the staff and find out what their thoughts are. I mean, I'm just wondering...
It's a long vacation. Parents are ready to send their kids back by the second.
So again, Mr. Nelson, the calendar does go out to sort of principal, share it with staff. We'll certainly do that again. We can get you the feedback. I don't think we, if, if it takes us a while, I don't think we need approval on February 12th. We can push it to the end of February if we need to. I just think as long as the conversations are happening, we just wanted to get a draft out there, and then we'll get you the responses.
I mean, I think certainly if it fell on a Thursday, it would be silly to bring everybody back here for a Friday instead of extending it to Monday.
But then the question is, do we have everyone attend on the Monday and get out on the Tuesday? So that's, that's, just come back for the Monday. So we're sort of on the two-year period where it's, it's a, it's a challenge one way or the other. Again, I appreciate not wanting to extend the year any, so.
Other comments?
I, I wanted to ask about the March 3rd Professional Development Day, because it's only two weeks after a vacation, and then there's all of March. And as a former teacher, I, you know, liked having the break more in the middle of the month, but I do hear there's the primary day issue. But I would still wonder if March 10th might be, you know, pushing it back a week, yeah?
The one bonus about having it on March 3rd would be the opportunity to do something collaboratively with some other local districts that also will be, a lot of school districts target those days.
Okay.
So it's an opportunity, like this past year, I know, like, the art department got together on a day that we didn't have any school, but it just gives us a chance to connect with some other people and maybe do some collaborative PD events. But if there's not that opportunity, then we should probably look at something later in March.
Okay. All right. All right, any other comments on the calendar? Okay, that being the first reading. Dr. Conti, you had a request for a wrestling trip out of state?
Yeah, the wrestling team is going to a tournament in Concord, New Hampshire, and they wanted to stay overnight. They were going to drive back and forth, but I think it's just safer, the youth program is going to pay for the rooms for the kids. I just wanted to have approval for the wrestling team to travel to Concord, New Hampshire this weekend.
So...
Second. The motion being moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Good luck.
Indeed. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That's four zero zero. Thank you. Is there any further public participation? And are there any other, is there a need for executive session tonight?
No.
No. Then this meeting...
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now adjourned.